Welcome everyone to the January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three Regular City Council Meeting for the City of International Falls. If you could all join me in pledging allegiance to its life. All right, thank you. First item we have is the roll call. We are missing one of our city councilors, Tim Wagner. We're trying to get him online on Zoom right now. With that being said, he won't be able to vote, but he'll be able to take part in any of the discussion and ask any questions while online. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda with any additions or deletions. We have a couple of additions adding in at number ten would be a resolution to join the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. Eleven, completing a quiet title action on city property. And twelve, consider having a title opinion done on all titles held by the City of International Falls. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with those additions.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden. We have a second by Councillor Bowler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. We'll go to the approval of the minutes. First set of minutes is going to be from the January third, two thousand and twenty-three, City Council Organizational Meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. We have a motion by Councillor Bowler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councillor Taylor. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we go to the Regular City Council Meeting of January third, two thousand and twenty-three. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councillor Taylor. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Finally, we'll go to last Monday's Committee of the Whole Meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. We have a motion by Councillor Bowler.
Second.
Second by Councillor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I will vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we go to payments and claims. We have city transfers going to the Permanent Improvement Fund of sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. That's going evenly from the six oh one water fund and the six oh three sewer fund in the amount of, both of them in the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Transfer going to the Reserve for Capital Outlay, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and forty-two cents. That's coming from the four oh one water fund in the amount of fourteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. And the six oh three sewer fund in the amount of five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-five cents. For total transfers of eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. Accounts payable, City of International Falls claims is nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixteen cents. And there was a typo on the original form we had. It's not library commission claims, or it's not airport commission claims, it's library commission claims. And that's two thousand, three hundred and five dollars and forty-nine cents. For a total of nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. And yes, it is very, very bizarre that we don't have airport claims, so I can understand why we have that typo. So the Chair at this time would entertain a motion to approve the resolution making the payments and claims.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councillor Taylor. Second by Councillor Bowler. Discussion? Hearing none, we will call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring things to the council that's not on the agenda? All right. All right, we'll have an opportunity again later in the meeting to bring something forward. Next, we have opening of the bids. I believe there was one bid for the Shannon's Incorporated, for the Block One Plaid of Fairview Edition of Coochin County Parcel Number nine-two dash one-one-four-zero dash zero-one-one-seven-zero. And that was Shannon's Incorporated in the amount of three thousand, six hundred dollars. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that bid. We have a motion by Councillor Bowler.
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Holden. Discussion? I was here during the bid opening, that was the most anti-climatic thing I've ever witnessed. All right, we have a motion and a second, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Go to the consent agenda, we have allow unnecessary expenses for two thousand and twenty-three for travel and training for public work staff as presented in your packet. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion by Councillor Bowler.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councillor Taylor. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I will vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we go to a mayoral proclamation declaring January twenty-ninth through February fourth, two thousand and twenty-three as Catholic Schools Week at Saint Thomas Plain School. Chair would entertain a motion to make that proclamation.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councillor Taylor. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, consider appointment to the North Cooch area Cemetery District. We did have conversation about this at the last meeting, that I was still looking to try to find someone. I did not want to appoint another city councillor to that position. I was not able to find anybody else, so I will be appointing a city councillor to that position. And Tim Wagner has expressed interest, so at this time I would move the name forward of Tim Wagner for the North Cooch area Cemetery District. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden, do we have a second? We have a second by Councillor Bowler. Any discussion? Please. Did I hear the rumor correctly that you are now the Chair of that board? All right, we have a motion and a second to make that appointment of Tim Wagner. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Now we vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, consider the approval of the final Baccus Plaid in Block forty-three and forty-four, Plaid of International Falls. All kinds of people here, city attorney, city engineer, Isaac Meyer, Scarlett Bennett, Justin Elers, and Alexander Baker Project Representative. Please, everyone come forward. That's just it, I was gonna say, you're missing him.
Kelly's back there too.
Thank you, Mayor, for having us. As you'll see today in your packet, we've got a division of the Alexander Baker and Baccus School Buildings. As the council knows from our past presence here at the meetings, we have approximately a fifteen million dollar project to convert the Alexander Baker School into an apartment building, approximately twenty-seven units. And we've got a bit of a complex line and lots split here that has been reviewed by the planning commission as well as Kelly and the city engineer. This was put together by Dave Serrano, a local surveyor, and essentially delineates the two historical buildings based along their foundations and carries through the upper floors, separating them physically. Ultimately, as we have a final plan for this building, those will also be separated with appropriate fire rods and all of those goodnesses. But with that said, I'll probably turn it over to Kelly for any comments he has, and we're of course hoping for any questions. But I do believe we've satisfied, hopefully to a good degree, the city building official and the engineer.
I don't really have a lot to add. There's a couple little things that we do have to adjust on there, they're not anything that's permanent other than a color of a line that we have to get turned in red and basically one typo layer on this. So the recommendation is basically to move forward with what it is, with the changes opposed to it. We did change the dates on there, so they fit what they were before. Of course, we looked at twenty-two before. I think it's a very valid project. This is the beginning step.
Any questions?
Did you make the typo? No, I didn't. I learned that in class.
So if we
Yeah, pretty much. That's why I asked.
So if we approve this, what is the next step that the project
The next step that the project take would be the next item on the council's agenda today would be approving the fifth district. That said, the project is in the process of moving towards our closing. We're beginning due diligence with our lenders and investors. The project is currently out for bid to low-hole contractors and others. We are really hoping to find some good contractors to work with us on this building. There's a lot of jobs to be created and doing the work necessary to rehabilitate that historic building. So we are hoping for a perhaps late spring closing if all things can align.
Any other questions? What happens in the event that the bids come in considered because we're finding that city with all the projects that we're doing? So what happens with your project?
I'll let Justin take that one to some extent, that's why I was bringing the whole team.
Good evening, Justin Miro is with Trellis Co., we're the co-developers with Kutaska on this, based out of Twin Cities. Very excited to be coming forward for you all today and would be very thankful for having such a strong city council and city staff who are working with us on this really important and complicated and exciting project for the community. So as construction members have been coming in high, it's a combination of things that we need to address. We've been working with the state, you know, we have gotten some additional potential funding from the state for this project in anticipation of these cost increases. So some of that has been built into what we've been working with, with the state so far. And so that's been a very positive relationship. We've seen really good and strong support from NHFO, which is the State Housing Finance Agency. Without the state historic credit, which has not been reinstated as well, we will potentially be going back to the state for any potential gap funding that may remain after bids. We're hopeful that the bids will come in very competitively and we'll be able to move forward in a very, I guess, efficient path. But I will say, we have a lot of confidence that the state will continue to support this project and get us through to the closing table should some level of additional increase come in. But that's the status.
Any other questions? I've been asked this one question, I didn't know the answer. So when this project moves forward, who will physically own that structure?
So again, Justin Miro is from Trellis Co. The ownership entity will be a shared ownership entity between Kutaska and Trellis Co. And then a partner investor, the tax credit investor for the development. That tax credit investor who's investing the equity into this community, into the project, will not largely be seen or heard from, they won't be controlling the project, they're just kind of the equity partner. Well, as Kutaska and Trellis are the co-owners and controllers, and our Trellis Co, our management organization, will be the property managers. So we'll likely own our management companies, not a full party, and take a lot of pride in managing properties and keeping them up.
And if I might add, Kutaska Community Action, like Trellis, who are both nonprofit Minnesota-based corporations, so we do not intend to sell or have any disposition of that building long-term. So essentially, our limited partner, our primary investor, is hopefully the project is owned and managed by the nonprofit organizations at the core of this project.
So it would still be Citizens for Baccus AB?
So the project will be purchased from Citizens for Baccus AB by the partnership group, so they will no longer have ownership, though obviously Lois is here and we are in close partnership, we're done on so many parts.
Well, and I think that's where things get murky and the water. There's no one on this board that doesn't see this as a possibility, just the community trying to understand, you know, because we're missing pieces of it up here, but we want to help and make sure that it's able to move forward. So I think that was the only purpose of my question. Right.
Fantastic.
And I would imagine some people are concerned that we may be creating the city of International Falls, so that ends up with that higher, and I don't see that as being
Everyone here is shaking their head, no, 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 no.
And I totally blew that, but I just know things work around it, and I'm guessing that's where some of those questions came from, whatever I've read if I'm surprised here. Believe it or not, I was here ten years ago when this all started all, so that's another thing I like though, it's taken a long, prodigal, I know everybody wants to go faster, but here, due diligence.
Like it works. No chance. Fantastic. I hope that's a headline. Does anyone else have any questions for these folks? All right, so at this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to give the final approval of the Plaid forty-three and forty-four of International Falls.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden, do we have a second? We have a second by Councillor Bowler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll vote yes. Motion carries four zero. All right. Thank you, guys. I think we're probably gonna be okay on this one. Next is adopting the resolution authorizing the execution of the developers' agreement, the development agreement providing the city's tax increment financing assistance for the Alexander Baker Project. Chair would entertain a motion to move that forward.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councillor Taylor. Any questions on this?
Yeah, but I need Kelly to come back up here. Oh, really?
I didn't think so. I guess, well, what is your question?
I didn't have a question, I think this is what all these entities are about, including the tax, it come in finally, this is what it's all about, and I think it's gonna be a great addition. I mean, it's actually located, gonna be even over separate, I understand, nobody attached to Baccus, well, there's already some of these resources for people, but even if it's just for meals, you know.
So is this starting the taxing district that we formed two years ago, is that basically what we're doing right now? Please?
I've been working with Mary Ippe, she's with Taflo, she's been working with us from the beginning of developing the tax rate increment financing district within the city, within this area for this project. What this does is, we've been working on a development agreement with them to understand all the individual pieces of this, and that's what this is authorizing, is moving forward with that development agreement. Both legal parties have looked at that and have, you know, put their input in on it, just the next step of the process.
So ultimately, when, this will probably have to come back to the council at least one more time for the tax increment finance?
No, you already created all that.
Okay, that's what I was wondering if that's
That was created previously, yep.
Fair enough, just trying to understand processes that we don't do every day. You used a fun word, right? All right, so we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero, thank you.
Mayor, if there's any questions, I'll leave some business cards with Betty. Happy to answer any questions from councillors anytime.
All right, sounds good. All right, next we have a request to rehire Kevin Zook as an emergency medical technician for the International Falls Ambulance Service. Chair would entertain a motion to make that hire.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councillor Taylor. We have a second from Councillor Bowler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, consider a request to remove part-time patrol officers from the International Falls Police Department roster as presented. There's also a letter in the packet explaining the reasoning behind it. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that request. We have a motion by Councillor Bowler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councillor Taylor. Discussion?
I've seen the answers full-time.
Wow! All right. And just to touch on it, these are people that have moved on from the city, they're working full-time, and this is no result of negative actions that they have done.
No.
I understand, I understand. So we have a motion and a second, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, consider a request to approve hiring for the position of a full-time officer effective January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I was gonna have my
Oh, this might come up then.
Yeah, as you know, with Officer Stenson resigning, took us a little bit of time to set the process. This would just be replacing recommending Officer Joshua He's done everything in more of the best part-time officer. I have nothing but good things to say about the entire panel and also the members of the plaid. We've been really lucky and we always seem to have I consider every one of the Joshua just I am happy with but I think it does point your continued support and the bonds and the support.
I just have eight questions, because I know that you were not at our last City Council meeting, and it kind of fits into this whole thing. The school district was looking at that resource officer, has there been any movement on that?
I believe they're meeting right I'm not sure. But again, that's something that we're working hard from
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
Yeah, you know, like I said, it's something I'm really hoping to accomplish, but yeah.
So that would open up another potential position in the future. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion, or we do not have a motion, Chair would entertain a motion to make the hire.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden, do we have a second? Second by Councillor Bowler. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think International Falls is very fortunate to have Josh, he actually worked for me when we first opened with jail and dispatch, when we moved to town, that's why he's here. So I'll take a little bit of credit for this right now, but I'm sure everything Mike says I agree with, and I'm sure is true. And I know he's very, like he said in the packet, he gets people community-oriented, I think he understands how he can, where all this stuff starts, you know, and interaction like that. And if we could get a community resource officer, anybody, that isn't for everybody, there's not that's more personality, this separate, I think he's gonna be a fine hire. And one more thing, one more, done. You know, see, I've so kind of your boss, and you know the rules, like go with that, don't you? I knew you would, there.
Wow! Councillor Bowler?
I also have heard some very, very good things here in Bobbin School. Thank you.
And I guess I would, that's one thing that I've heard, I've seen you in the community, I don't think we've ever sat down and had a real conversation, but when we've had the situation that we had last year at the school, I had tons of people talk to me about how great your actions were when there was a bomb threat at the school, and how you ran to the situation rather than try to call. And I have a ton of respect for that, and I'm very excited to have you on. And when Councillor Taylor said that he's taking credit for you, he rolled his eyes really well, so I'm All right, we have a motion and a second, we'll call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero, thank you. All right, next we will refer to this portion of tonight's meeting as the TED Show, or TED Talk, or
I like
however you want to look at it. Before we start, if we could have the Public Works Director please come up. You have more items on your line item than we had items on the agenda.
If you see all the papers I got spread out in the back room, trying to keep Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to sit in front of you this evening. I apologize for the lengthy list of laundry items I have on this, but I'm kind of excited for
You turn your mic, we'll shoot for the people at home back there to hear you.
Thank you, I'm very excited for the projects that we have planned for two thousand and twenty-three. With us switching engineering firms at the end of twenty-one, it took us almost Um, with us switching engineering firms, um, at the end of twenty-one, it took us almost, well, we, we lost a year. So we're basically everything we were going to do in twenty-two, we're going to do in twenty-three, and then so. I don't know how you want me to handle the first item. I'm asking for permission to approve advertising for bids for the rehabilitation of lift station number fifteen, which is at the corner of Fifteenth Street and Fifth Avenue East. This is a lift station that we took over from, uh, North Cooch when we were going through our SOE, SOC items in two thousand eighteen. This is another lift station that is in need of a serious upgrade. It's not as detailed as we're doing with lift station number seven by McDonald's. But the pumps in them in that lift station are original. Um, as part of the bid, we're only going to replace one pump due to the fact that we had to put in a pump in there September of, September or October this year. So it'll be good to get this one, um, made here at the stand.
All right, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the advertising for lift station number fifteen.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Any questions for the Public Works Director? Do you agree with none? Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next item is, uh, advertising for the bids for local roads and utilities projects.
Yes, so this is another project that's kind of a long time coming. Um, it'd be the alley, um, between Sixth Avenue and Fifth Avenue. Also known as Randy's Alley, or Orton's Alley. We have a lot of line back there that is pushing a hundred and ten years old. Sad thing is, it goes perfect holes in the side of it, but when you actually dig down to repair it, you can actually read the writing on the pipe. That's when cast iron was cast iron. But if it lived, it's useless. Um, we're looking to replace the water and sewer in that alley. Um, we're going to replace a chunk of water line going up Fifth Avenue where when we redid, um, Third Street in the late nineties, um, we had one block going from the alley up to Third Street, um, that new water line was stubbed across way by the coffee shop there. So we're going to replace that chunk. We're going to bring it down far enough to go around, um, Wazie's building so that when the PCA's building and so on. So that when we bring new water line down Second Street in front of the, uh, mill office, we won't have to get back into the. Another part of that is a full-depth reclaim, um, mill utilities on Ninth Avenue from Fifty-Eight Street. And then we are going to put the wear course on Highway Lane as part of our sewer replacement program. A lot of streets, and we're going to see when we replace sanitary sewer, we're going to put the base course of between us down. It's the first inch and a half, two inches of between us, and then we're going to let it over a frost or two cycle before we put the wear course on it. Because as you'll see, you get compaction issues. You drive down Sixth Street now that they did twenty-five years ago, that's because they didn't, it's, it's settlement issue. So what we're trying to do is give it a freeze stop and then put the wear course on. So that would finish up the Highway Lane project. And then we're going to do a full milling overlay for all of Stenberg Edition, uh, which is in need of attention. We're going to do a spot repair on a sanitary sewer and do some manhole or curb and gutter replacements, but it's just going to be a mill and a half. I'm taking inch and a half, and, uh, that's part of our local roads milling program. Another part of that, which I'm going to pull in and explain, we have an assessed project for Ninth Avenue East and Twenty-Street East. It's all going to be bid under one project with our local roads and utilities. Pretends it's an assessed project. We need to approve and authorize that separately so we can follow the four twenty-nine assessment rule. But you'll see, they're all going to be bid under the same project, but we need to advertise or have it approved separately from the items on the B.
I have one question. I knew that, uh, water line and sewer line was a hundred and some years old in that alley. I often wondered when that little street along Cockee Landing would get fixed, and now we're going to be able to see that new curb and gutter all fixed up, water and sewer.
Yes.
I'm comfortable with that because it, it needs to bad.
And one thing to keep in mind in twenty and twenty, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, all of the, the majority of the roads that we did full-depth reclaim or milling overlay on, and we didn't do anything with the utilities, the theory is to bring those up to number one level, one being brand new, five being a total rebuild. Okay? Knowing that we're not going to be able to replace the utilities under those roads for at least ten to fifteen years, we'll put fresh blacktop on those, fresh between us. Okay, now the projects are going to get smaller because we are doing the utilities. Right? So Tenth Street, I know we've got some bad water line there, but that's not even on the list for the next fifteen years. Okay, so instead of just keep digging holes and not patching them, it's, it's cheaper and better for us to mill it, put a nice base on it, um, until we can get to the water. So, but the projects now are going to get smaller because they're more expensive. A full reconstruct is five, five to six times more than a full-depth reclaim or milling.
Looking forward to it.
So I, I have a question. If, if, uh, if bids come in too high on these, how are you going to pull these off so that we can afford the projects for this year?
So I think in our November or December Public Works Meeting, I kind of laid out which projects were priority and if we do run into that situation. So as you look as Stenberg Edition is, is the last one. Okay? If, if we do not get favorable prices, that's the type of worst stuff we're going to look at. But if we get to that situation, we'll, we'll bring it to you and, and you can make the final decision. We do kind of have a priority list based on, on prices.
And I hope you understand how it works, and I think, I think we've had this conversation before, but Ninth Avenue, that's a state aid, if you're correct.
Yes.
So the fixing between Fifth and Eighth Street, we just put, how does, how does that work for us?
So the one thing about municipal state aid money is we can use this municipal state aid money on that road, okay? Or we can do it on our own. The, the one thing with using MSA money on it is you have to bring it up to ADA compliance. Okay, so all the, all the sidewalks and the head ramps. Okay, so you're looking at about fifteen thousand dollars a quarter to bring it up to ADA. The one thing with, if you look at Ninth Avenue and Eighth Avenue, Ninth Avenue looks like a gorge. So I, I, I don't want to. Needness-wise, it's better for us to do a full-depth reclaim until we can come through there. I, I don't want anybody to think that, I don't think it's cheap to do, because nothing's cheap, but it's just like the twenty twenty and twenty twenty. Let's make the roads smoother again. Me, there's more club mix on Ninth Avenue between Fifth and Eighth than there is between us, right? And club mix were there five or six times a summer, and, you know, we get a rainstorm, we get a little traffic, it's, it just, club mix is temporary. So we're better off to do that. You may see me do the same thing on Eighth Avenue, but Ninth Avenue isn't municipal state aid.
So at this time, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the, uh, advertising bids for Randy's Auto Alley Utilities, Ninth Avenue, Fifth to Eighth Street, full-depth reclaim, uh, Highway Lane, and the Stenberg Edition milling overlay. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those. A motion by Councilor Bowler? We have a second by Councilor Bowler? Any additional discussion? I had to laugh when you said it was a war zone because that's where I had my nice and worse. All right.
I got it, excuse.
Guess so. I was never looking for that. Uh, so we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, uh, we have, uh, the one that, uh, um, the Public Works Director has already discussed, which is, uh, approving the plans and ordering the advertisement bids for Ninth Avenue East and Twenty, uh, Street East as petition for a special assessment. Chair would entertain a motion to move that forward.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor, oh, I get it, Taylor. We have a second by. Yeah, I got, they have the name on everything. Councilor Bowler? Yeah, I just talked about that concussion, just getting right back to it. All right, we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next we go to, uh, your next project for municipal state aid project.
So yes, uh, this is Seventh Street and Second Avenue, so it is one block, um, east from Third Avenue to Second Avenue, um, going north to Fourth Street. Uh, this is a project that we're encumbering our municipal state aid, so we are borrowing ahead one point two million dollars, um, for this project. We are going to replace water and sewer, um, which isn't paid for municipal state aid money, but since it's a total rebuild, we're going to replace all the utilities under the road. We're going to take the storm sewer that's humped up along Second Avenue. We're actually going to move that as far to the east as possible, so it'll be totally out of the roadway. We looked at trying to lower it, that's the problem, is it's, storm sewer was our last utility added above water and sewer, so it's our showers. So what happens is frost has a hold of it, and so we're going to move it as far to the east as we can, get it out of the road completely. Hopefully, that should take care of the issue. We're going to do, uh, full curb and gutter, street lighting. We're going to extend the between us trail that, um, we put in in twenty twenty-one for the Highway Project at Dead End, between us trail to nowhere. We're going to put it on the south side of Seventh Street and the east side of Second Avenue, which will lead up and tie into the between us trail. We've got another chunk of a hundred and some new water line from Fourth Street to Fifth Street. That's already there, that we're going to replace, that'll turn, um, it's all the way down Fifth Avenue, or Fifth Street to Second Avenue, that one block more.
So Chair would entertain a motion to approve, uh, that project.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilor Holden? We have a second? A second by Councilor Bowler? Almost by Councilor Taylor? Any, uh, discussion? Do you agree with none? Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next landfill project.
So I'm looking for, uh, permission to approve and advertise for bids for the demolition landfill that we talked about last year budget season, or during budget season. Now with the MPCA, they want us to dig a couple of test pits, um, but by the sounds of it, they're going to accept our plans once we do that, and we're ready to put that project behind us.
All right, Chair would entertain a motion to approve that advertising.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Taylor?
Aye.
Second by Councilor Bowler? Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Uh, the next city beach, uh, repair water treatment plant for a berm removal project.
So these are two items that were based on flooding issues we had. We had a lot of debris and a lot of garbage mixed in with the sand or at the beach. We just found out today by the sounds of it that, uh, most of it's going to be funded through FEMA in the state. So we did get that. Our biggest thing was for us to wait. I do have budgeted dollars that we can pay for this. Um, the project is all washed out, hard to fund, but, um, so it's a good time to bid these now, especially since I think the city council would have to be, you know, on the first day of the weekend. And we're trying to actually tie in the clay that we used on the berm with the Army Corps of Engineering. We're going to try and see if we can use that to save money at the demo site. Since the clay was certified, so we're going to have some samples done on that and hopefully be able to take that clay and use it on the demo site. So we've been trying to create it to save money.
All right, Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make.
A motion by Councilor Holden? We have a second?
I'll second.
Taylor? Discussion? Do you agree with none? Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, yes, motion carries four zero. Next, uh, consider radio news program for mobile units and portable radios with Motorola to upgrade public works radio system from VHF to RMR.
So our VHF system that we use for public works, um, currently is, is failing. It's dying technology. The issue I have is by the time we figured out that the VHF system was not the direction we had that was already created in the budget season, the budget, um, I'm trying to find what these people here might say they heard on the swing. The, um, one issue is, so we are looking to buy nineteen mobile units and ten portable units. I'm looking to be able to use thirty thousand dollars in budgeted money for twenty twenty-three and lease the remaining balance of fifty three thousand, twenty-sixty-five dollars. So I can budget over three years to pay that. One issue I ran into is I'm waiting for two documents from Motorola for the city attorney to review, and I haven't gotten them yet, and I was supposed to get them. So I don't know if we want to withdraw this or, um, wait until Chelsea use those two documents.
I'll go forward that way.
And I appreciate, and I apologize, I've been working with him since Thursday to get it.
Ever since Thursday? We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? We have a second by Councilor Holden? We have a motion by Councilor Bowler? Discussion?
I would just like to add, this is the way to go, where there's such good radio, and if, like the summer, if a flood or another emergency of some type, they will, it can be programmed and set up so if need be, they can tell directly to the chief or whoever. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why this is good.
And that's one thing that we can't do right now, communicate with, media, by the department, to get this area down.
We have a motion and a second, uh, with the, uh, city attorney. All right, we'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, Emerald Dashboard.
Did you want to go with it or?
I, I already did. I read it.
So last year we applied for a Emerald Dashboard grant with the DNR for sixty-two thousand dollars. Um, part of the check the boxes was as part of a grant, we had to develop a Emerald Dashboard management plan. So, uh, we did a dash tree survey throughout the whole community. Um, they looked at all the trees and came up that we do not have any Emerald Dashboard. And as part of the financing, that's, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. It's not a matter of if, it's when. Councilor Holden, I'm sure you remember when Dutch Elms came through, right? We're going to have to do the same thing. So part of this grant was, we originally applied for the grant, we actually went for tree replacement as well. We exceeded their amount, their grant limit, I'm fine for that, but there were so many pieces that we'd have to do before we could get tree money. One of them was we have to create Emerald Dashboard, um, the tree survey, we need to upgrade our tree ordinance, those type of things. So once we get all that done, then we're ready to actually put roots on the ground.
All right, so we have, uh, All right, so we have, uh, Chair would entertain a motion to consider the adoption of the Emerald Dashboard Management Plan.
I'll make that motion.
Is a motion by Counselor Holden. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Taylor. Discussion? Can you none call the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we have, uh, uh, purchase for a, uh, fifty ton trailer from Phil Master Trailers for forty six thousand, one hundred and six dollars and eighty five cents. Good bid, right? How's about that, Ted?
So this is to replace a nineteen ninety five Triax or trailer that we used to haul on our, our, and other large equipment. Um, it was a budgeted item. It was something that, um, a lot of staff and myself felt that needed to be replaced. So, um, I'm the trailer here. Um, capital outlay replacement is traded. So it's a small year, um, financially, compared to some of the stuff we had to give the last year. It's very important and, uh, it's time to, um, replace it.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve that, uh, Phil Master Trailer for a good bid, right? Is a motion by Counselor Holden? The second? By Counselor Holden? Discussion?
Just, uh, let's know that. They did runs out again. Then we can do state.
Yeah.
You know, it's. We don't.
All right. We have a motion and second for cheaper stuff. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll go with yes, motion carries four zero. All right, next up is, uh, another dump trailer from McCoy Equipment for fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
Yes, this is a little bit smaller trailer. Uh, right now it's going to, um, we're actually going to take the existing trailer we have now and, uh, send it out to the water shop. The water shop trailer is one that we will put on our after property auction for the spring. Um, this trailer here will be a lot more universal, um, for hauling your skid steer and whatnot. The one thing we ran into, which I think was a good thing, was our need pickup. Was, I felt was a huge success. Um, and we really, really could use something like this when we did it. So I could say that we're, we're going to use it for more. It's going to be more universal in the trailer we're using.
All right, Chair would entertain a motion to purchase that trailer for fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Is a motion by Counselor Bowler.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Taylor. Discussion? Can you none call the question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll go with yes, motion carries four zero. All right, Rainy, what, he remember intake inspection report?
So I was asked today if we ever got this done. So, um, this was, uh, part of an infrastructure project that with the rescue money, rescue funds, COVID money that we got last year, it's something that hasn't been done in ten fifteen years. So basically a company came out, put a boat in water, um, they put a guy in the water with scuba gear and he swam on intake, which is a twenty four inch bite that, uh, goes approximately four hundred feet out anywhere near the river. And inspected every square inch of it, uh, inspected the intake, um, and did not report back. There was a little corrosion, but most of that was, um, expected. With zebra mussels being found in Rainy Lake, that could become a serious issue for us in the future because that's where they like to congregate. And I'm glad to report that there were no zebra mussels. It's not a real exciting project that nobody ever really realizes, kind of like we have in a lift station. Right? Nobody really appreciates a pump until it's gone. Same thing with the intake. Everybody forgets about it, but it's there, it's in good shape, and we're going to do it more often.
I always think that, right?
Yes.
Get your drinker. There's the water coming in for the drinker.
Yep. So we're going to, you're going to see us doing, you know, we're actually going to figure that into our capital improvement plan, whether it's every five or six years, but we're going to do it more often.
All right, since that was just called full information, we don't have any action, but I will, uh, be the one to admit it was me who asked that question of him this morning. I, uh, I hadn't gotten my packet, I hadn't read it yet. And I just, out of, out of curiosity, we haven't, we haven't heard anything back on that person's scuba diving. Hey, how's that going, Ted? We'll hear about it soon.
I heard it last month, but.
Yeah, I heard it was up.
And, and it was, it's very more interesting reading than you'd think.
It is, the pictures in, in, uh, think of a pretty, yeah.
And I'll add one more, if anyone's interested in watching the video, I do have it on my computer. Nice fifteen minute video, anybody's welcome. I don't provide popcorn, but you're welcome to do it.
Uh, I think maybe you could put together a collection of, uh, some of your best sewer moments and.
I do have some.
I know you do. Yeah, uh, stick around, we're going to have one more thing. Uh, consider the first reading of the contract ordinance setting the rates collected as revenue supporting utility operations. Uh, Ted Burka.
So as I brought up in budget, I recommended a two and a half percent increase for water and sewer for years twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. Um, we did not raise rates in twenty twenty two. It's a modest increase, um, and it's something we need to do. Everything is going up and, um, with our planned upgrade of the plant in twenty twenty five, getting closer to that level to be able to help with the FSA funding would be.
If, if you could just give a, a brief overview, not, not anything new, but why do we need to be increment raises now because of that PFA, uh, financing that we would have to get later? And how much do you have to jump at a later time to be able to meet state or?
Right now, with our per capita income, um, you know, in twenty twenty five, we're probably looking at a five dollar a month increase and then seven dollars, five dollars on water and seven dollars on sewer. Um, and as part of that is the state and PFA actually figure out what your affordability is for your water and your sewer. Okay, so when you look at the rate memo that is in your packet, um, you need to. It's funny. Should have it here. It's the whole time. So if you look at the bar graphs on the backside, under figure three, right now we're at about thirty eight sixty five for an average model. By the time we hit twenty twenty five, we're going to have a cap of thirty seven dollars. So not only with prices of everything going up every year, it's, it's getting us closer to that within the next few years, so it's not such a shock. But once we hit that affordability level, right now we're, we're allowed to finance and pay it back. But once we hit that affordability level, then we're eligible for grants. Right now, we're not eligible for grants because as per the state, we do not meet the cap of our water and sewer rates based on, um, medium household. So we need to get there. And one thing I pointed out at Public Works meeting is pretty much everybody above the black line in that figure three, most of them have already, they've, they've done a project. If you, if you look at Two Harbors, they've done a PFA project. Okay, so however long ago that was, they, they had to pump their rates up to meet that cap to be able to qualify for the financing through PFA. If you remember a few years ago when Big Falls, we did their water tank. And everybody was shocked on how they had to get water heaters for the first time. It's because everybody paid. The city of Moore was the same way. For thirty years, they didn't have water heaters in their house. Well, they weren't collecting enough money to do an upgrade to their system and water lines. The shot of water that needed to be rehabbed. So what happened was PFA came in and they waited. First of all, not everybody pays the same thing it needs to be paid in how much water you're doing. And you have to put water heaters in. Right? That's, that's what happens. It eventually catches up to you and by us not doing increment raises every year, it's caught up to us. And once we hit that ceiling, as you'll see in that memo, is our plan is it's a two percent increase every year for thirty years. And we feel that we'll have enough money at the end to make an investment for the next three. So, um, when we do a year, I've been, it's been six years since we raised rates in Sun Mass. It's too long because everything goes up. And the problem is now we're at the end of life and we don't have any money to react to. So we have to.
So the Chair would entertain a motion to consider the, for half the first reading of the contract ordinance, having the rate. We have a motion by Counselor Bowler. Do you have a second? Can you none call the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. I'll go with yes, motion carries four zero. Thank you, Public Works Director Rohan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, next, uh, we have a resolution, uh, to join the Coalition of Greater Minnesota City. This is something that we had budgeted, uh, for this year. It's open, the city administrator had, uh, started looking and I had asked if we would pay their dues yet this year. And if we pay them before next month, they are twenty five percent, no, fifty percent, twenty five percent of what they would need if we pay next month. So I think now would be a really, really good time to adopt this resolution and move forward. Uh, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution to join the Coalition of Greater Minnesota City.
I'll make that.
We have a motion from Counselor Holden. Have a second from Counselor Bowler. Discussion?
Is this, are we just, um, join, rejoining them again this year, have we done part?
This is the first time that.
Since we did, yeah, that time.
Yeah, we, we actually looked at that today. Hold up.
Yeah, well, I knew I still, a wrong one to went to.
All right, do we have a motion and second?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll, yeah, carry four zero. Next, we have, uh, approve, bring quiet title act, city conference.
So I, uh, sat down, uh, on, it's, uh, for, uh, uh, the, uh, contract. And the city international call, uh, that, uh, to contract, uh, uh, and whiskey. So, uh, saying they would pay over certain period of time, that, yeah, hold up. We don't need them right now, uh, but the people are deceived. So we think that would be done rather than doing four separate, so we, right, there are ten to apply to the last, the, uh, uh, the contract. So basically what I drafted is someone's complaint, uh, saying there will be one friend that didn't include South State on there, um, right away. So I had to go back, uh, with, or out of our, uh, title, that's all bad, it's about me. And hybrid, so they'll also appear in the sentence on your air staff, see what happens. File for some, public, uh, your set, or just title. Uh, uh, had plans for that property to, uh, uh.
Uh, Chair would entertain a motion to approve, the, the quiet title. There's a motion by.
For reported. Uh, I did double check, there was no fight, uh, uh, that. Yeah, so for quite a lot of files, it's up. We have, uh, 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 yeah. And no one reached out to us, then, uh, we filed, uh, for, uh, we did. It is.
Good fact, all right, moving on. Uh, we have a motion and second to, uh, prove quiet title. Call the question.
Aye.
Consider having a title that can be done on all types of, uh, uh, for the city.
So I picked up two or four boxes, uh, after, uh, the, uh, 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 and, uh, I started going to say our, uh, uh, so, um, and then, one fact after, uh, so I watched, uh, the, the battery, uh, I, uh, 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 I got, uh, computer program for you, we all remotely, uh, uh, and it's, it's more, uh, if it's, first, if we were simply getting titles about either titles helped, uh, titles by, uh, the city international call, or I take interest in, because technically the, uh, 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 not, uh, so it may be deeper, like, uh, order that title, uh, rather than going off abstract, uh, other, uh, 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 about, uh, and facilities that, uh, uh, that I'm going to bring in, I think. Uh, one fact, abstract, cool, but not, uh, okay. So I just want to, so, uh, when we say all types of, uh, all types. City for, uh, all of our. Yeah, and the property, uh, but that's the other part, uh, uh, they, uh, outside, uh, so we'll be, you know, if there's other, uh, 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 all of them. So just, I, I don't have the, uh, that I, uh, rather, uh, 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 I heard, uh, uh, it is, but, uh, uh, for that.
So. But I, I'm more, so more.
I.
So. Chair would entertain a motion to table. To help. Right.
Uh, it's probably.
So we have a motion to table, uh, for board, we have. Got.
Hi. Oh, I. All right.
Call the question.
Hi. Hi. Hi.
Uh, next, uh, have. phone home meeting that we've all been invited to. Hope for. Ten percent. By. And this. But I just wanted, uh, to put it into our package. Uh, to be.
Oh, yeah, uh, I can go at first. Uh, I will have reported number.
Uh, first. Also, we did hear you say that too. Uh, tell me you. Yeah. All right, we, in your packet, you have, uh, your concrete board, fire, your. Board. Uh. All right, we'll go to audience. One on one. Take the. You'll go to correspondent, uh, stay on the hill through the. Mark night. Uh, because we did, uh, remember the. Eight up, three down. But. That. I would. For. More. On. Back. For. We'll have our first regular meeting on a Monday this year. Where.